This is the Wellsco special meeting on the 23rd of February 2021. The special meeting, we have a quorum. And the agenda item that we will be discussing is discussion and potential action on our insurance policies. Fred, if you wanted to give us an update on what you found based on the previous regular meeting, some of the questions we had, the floor is yours.
Okay, I'm not sure what the questions were. I've sent out all the material.
Yeah, so.
Did everybody look at it? And if so, is any more questions?
Well, Fred, Fred, I have one, you know, reading the Jones Act and the longshore statutes. I just wondered, do we have to register our employees under those for there to be coverage? How does that work? I have no idea how those are implemented or whether you just make a claim against them and allege that you're working in a relevant capacity.
That's, that's a very good question, Larry. I'm not sure about filing a claim. I do know that you're correct. It's the, the crew coverage is under the Jones Act. It's included in it. And as far as how to file a claim?
Well, well, I'm just wondering, as a preliminary matter, do our employees have to be registered under it? Is it like workman's comp where there's a dedicated income stream that goes to provide that coverage? I just don't know how that's implemented.
I don't have an answer to that. So, so the question is, 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 say it again there?
Well, you know, we got the statutes for the work, the, the longshoremen's and harbor workers in the Jones Act.
Right.
And I just wondered, you know, are we making an assumption that our wardens are covered under those? Is that a safe assumption to make? Do they have to be registered under it ahead of time to be qualified employees? I just don't, you know, I read the statutes and they're, they're kind of a hodgepodge. They're, they're sort of like six of this. It's like a Chinese menu of coverage. And our guys kind of fall under both and under neither. Well, but I'm just wondering how, how those, how those get involved? I mean, do you just make a claim like after the fact? Or, or do we have to have our employees registered under those beforehand?
Okay, to answer the, do we have to have registered? I don't have an answer for that, but as far as what act they covered under, according to the agent who provides us with our marine coverage in Maine and who's rather well versed in this, when I say rather well versed in it, so she appeared. It was her, based on the job description that we provided her. She said that they fall under the Jones Act, under the crew coverage under the Jones Act. Because the Jones Act, as you know, it's rather extensive, just like you said, there's a lot of things in there. As opposed to the longshore act. So as far as registration though, she never said that we needed to provide her with any kind of registration, unlike, unlike the Workers' Compensation Act in Connecticut, which they have a form we have to fill out, but that's more for, and I don't want to mix and match here, more for who's not covered under workers' compensation than who is. The one in Connecticut. So I can find out about the registered, whether she needs, whether they need to be registered in a, under a particular form and filed with the feds or what? I'm not sure.
I, I just don't want to rely on the Jones Act, make an assumption that may not be founded. You know, it'd be good to have some assurance that, that coverage is in fact applicable to them. Okay?
Yep.
So Fred, that we did have to get information from the wardens. Was that for this or was that for the workers' comp or something else?
For both. It was, we needed it for the, the crew coverage. When, for when they're working on the water, they wanted to know what their exposure was. And that's the reason we had to give them a job description. Same thing with the state of Connecticut or with Brown in Connecticut for workers' compensation on land. So they both asked for the job description and they both asked for a description of what we did as a commission, which Pete and I, I'm sorry, Pat and I provided them.
Right, and they also, they, they also gave, you know, their names and addresses and some personal information? Is that correct?
For, for the up and, for the, I'm going to call it the crew coverage, okay? For lack of, for clarification.
Okay, so.
When they're working on the water. I think what you're talking about is the auto indemnity. The two wardens had to fill out their driver's license and their names and that kind of stuff. And, but that was strictly on the automobile.
So does the, does the insurance agent covering the, the Jones Act, do they know the names of our wardens? So as, as Larry was pointing out, at least they know who they are. Is that, do they know who they are even by name?
I don't think so. I think they basically said, how many, how many wardens do you have? And we said two. They wanted to know the approximate annual payroll, which we told them. And.
Didn't they ask for the identification number though, their, their, their FBI? What would?
That was our federal identification.
Ours?
That's, that's Wellsco's.
Okay.
But I don't think under the Jones Act you have to register. And even the state unemployment compensation, you only have to register if people aren't covered or if you're applying for an exemption.
All right, so maybe unrelated, unrelated to the decision we make tonight, maybe Fred, you could just confirm if there's any process related to.
Identification of these people?
Yeah, yeah, so. So I think one of the big issues was the difference in the, the cost of the policy from, you know, last year and this year. And Pat did send out a summary of the changes and the increase in the value of the boat, the addition of some coverages and the increase in the liability from $500,000 to $1 million. Fred and Pat, is that, is that correct? Were there any other changes?
Pat?
The only other change still coming is that Brown and Brown's agent is working on workman's compensation coverage for us. She did tell Fred that the minimum premium for coverage will probably be $1,500.
Yeah, I had, if I can just jump in with Pat. I had conversations with both Maura, who is our agent at Brown for the workers' compensation in Connecticut, and with Lori, who's the agent for, for crew coverage in Maine. And both of them explained that the carriers require, when you have small accounts like this, require a minimum payment. And it just so happens that both of them are $1,500. The actual coverage is only like, I don't know, $200 or $300. If you, if you had an ample payroll and, you know, it was, it was enough for them to make money on it, if you will. I, I got a feeling it's their floor. I don't know. But both of them came in with the same figure on the minimum, which leads us to the question of should they be covered under the towns?
Yeah, that, that's not going to happen because that was something that we've gone back and forth with the, with both towns and Rob Avina. And so, so all of us are covered by the towns as town-appointed commissioners, but our wardens are, are employees of Wellsco and they are not covered by the towns. And that has been firmly established.
Perhaps if we, if we explain to both towns that we're too small, an organization to, you know, to get what normally would be a $200, $300 fee, we're, we're paying $1,500 for because we don't, we don't meet the, the criteria of a, a big enough organization. And, and we're really, and we're really, our wardens are servicing three commissions. They're, they're servicing Waterford Shellfish Commission, East Line Shellfish Commission and Wellsco. So just on the fact that they're doing Waterford and East Line Shellfish Commission, we should be able to get something out of Waterford and East Line rather than just Wellsco.
Hey Larry, as somewhat of a legal question, and that is, what's the feasibility of these wardens being employees of the towns in us, Wellsco, leasing or hiring that service on a, on a annual guaranteed cost basis or something?
Yeah, I have absolutely no idea, although I suspect that somebody would have thought of it by now, but maybe not.
So it's like a couple, a couple of quick questions. So, so Brown and Brown, are they the town? Do they provide the towns' workman's comp? Where did they come from?
They've been providing your insurance for years, Wellsco's that is.
Or, or just, pardon me?
I think.
Are they a local agency or?
I think Smith Insurance in Niantic is sort of the front for Brown and Brown.
Correct.
They're, they're either consolidated or they're the local representative of Brown and Brown.
That's correct.
Okay, so Marcia had a good point that we're certainly doing work for Wellsco and for Waterford and for East Line. And I think somebody mentioned in one of the correspondences, should they be additional named insured, which I think they should be. But in fact, if the towns have existing workman's comp policies, it seems to me that, you know, to Marcia's point, why don't we just pay the towns $200 or $300 bucks to add our wardens on there?
That's the way it was years ago.
Yeah, it seems like it should be like.
When I couldn't find any workman's comp documentation, I approached this HR person in East, and my understanding was it was East Line that we were piggybacking with. But the Waterford Town Attorney has wrote, has written an opinion, you know. I agree with a lot of this. The, the insurance though, originally was with Ryan Sullivan at Atlantic Insurance.
I remember that.
And when Atlantic went out of business, it went to Smith Brothers in Niantic. There are two Smith Brothers insurances. The one that we're with is out on the road by Rocky Neck Connector. And basically, Smith Brothers out there got taken over by Brown and Brown years ago. So it's, it's, they're, they're still called Smith Brothers, but the actual agency is Brown and Brown.
Pat, when was the decision, what, what was the document that you said there was a decision by Avina? It said we couldn't, that this wasn't possible for the towns to cover?
Peter sent it to us all quite a while ago.
Yeah, this was probably a year, year and a half ago. We've been, we've been fighting this with them for quite a while and, and that's our justification for having the, the large rainy day fund. And we, we inquired with them about the insurance policy and, and Rob Avina sent us back the, the thing that I described before, that all of us as commissioners are covered by.
I remember that, yeah, I remember that.
But then, but then he also pointed out that the wardens were not covered by town policies. Yeah, that, that's hard to believe, but, but a question, question for Fred. I'm not sure you, you had said, or somebody said that the insurance companies, whether it's Smithwicks or whether it's Brown and Brown, did want to know some information about the wardens, which seems reasonable, like they would want to do it. But then later on, somebody said, well, they didn't really need personal information from the wardens. Did they take some information? Do they have the names or, or not?
No, what they were looking for, for rating purposes, because we were interested in two things. One, would you provide the coverage? Two, what would it cost us? And they said, well, in order to find that out, you got to tell us what they do for a living and that will determine whether, or what they do for you, Wellsco. And that will determine whether we underwrite it or not. And then what your payroll is, and Pat gave them that, and that will determine what your premium is. So we gave them that and then they came back to us and said, well, your pre, your payroll is awful small. And as a result of it, and when you only got two employees, one is a part-timer, as a result of that, we're going to have to charge you the minimum. So we didn't give them names, but we did give them their identifiers, one's warden and one's assistant warden.
I guess, I guess my point would be that if we actually bind this insurance and one of these insurers does ask for the personal information of the wardens, then at some point in the future, we're going to have to remember that if these wardens retire, we change wardens, we'll have to give the new wardens information to the insurers.
Correct. You know, that would be, I think, part of our routine that we should have as far as looking at our insurance every year. We need to put something in place that some of this stuff doesn't get outdated on us. So you're right on that, on that point right there. But can I go back to Larry's for a second? Larry, if I, it would have been helpful to have this before, only because we're under this gun for tomorrow. But you want to know if, in essence, do we need to, I, for me to ask the agent, do we need to complete any other forms or provide them with any other information in order for the crew coverage to be? Is that fair?
Yeah, that's, just want to make sure, you know, I think we're operating under the assumption that they would come under that and they may well come under it as a matter of law. But I think it's just important we reassure ourselves that if there's anything we need to do to make, confirm that, we should do it.
Okay, well, we did ask him, ask her if she needed anything else. And at that time, she said, no, she didn't. So, but I'm going to go back and confirm it.
Yeah, I would just, I would just simply ask her, you know, are they covered under the Jones Act, basically? Does the Jones Act cover them? Are they going to be covered? Is there anything we need to do or is that just a matter of course?
Okay.
Just to clarify, it was Liberty Mutual who has the general liability and the auto indemnity who asks for the auto information, which actually was their names and their driver's license and that kind of stuff. If we go with Liberty on the work, Connecticut workman's comp, they may ask for more detail, you know, at that point.
So I think, so I think, Pat, I think that's getting to my point. So the wardens need to be covered in the winter time when they're driving in their vehicles. So the insurer obviously wants to know the vehicle information, who's driving it.
The auto insurance we have is just indemnity. There's no collision, there's no other coverages.
But, but you said they asked, they asked for the information, like what, what auto it is, is that correct?
No.
No, they asked for the driver and the driver's license and that was it.
Well, can you answer? Are we still here?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
To answer your question there, Rick, I'm at a question you just had. The only insurance that's being provided is for a vehicle that Wellsco does not own nor does the, I'm sorry, doesn't own, and a vehicle that they would hire. And that's in that material I sent you. It speaks to the, both those points on what coverage applies to the vehicles. I don't know if that answers your question.
One, one thing I'm a little surprised about that, Fred, and I'm just analogizing to when I was a state employee and I would drive to Hartford and other places regularly on state business and I would get paid a mileage allotment. And the state, obviously because I was working as a state employee and it was part of my duties, I had coverage with the state. And they always required to have a, a copy of my insurance policy with the coverage limits on it on record. They didn't ask for anything like that for our wardens? They're working in their own vehicles at most times, right?
Well, I never got into that piece and the reason I didn't is this was more, the piece that you're speaking of right now is, was already in place. So I didn't go into that piece of it, whether they had appropriate documentation to write it, because they already wrote it last year. So I just went forward with the fact that they wrote it, so they must have what they needed. And we're talking about renewing it, so.
Well, I think, I think we have a new assistant warden since last year and I don't know whether they'd have that information on file or not. That's something Rick might know, whether they've requested it directly from him or something, but just curious on that.
So everyone, I did find the email from Rob Avina and it is on the screen. He sent it to us last year, February 6th, if you wanted to read that.
Yeah, so it's, it's talking about personal insurance coverage, right? For personal insurance coverage, coverage for individual members of Wellsco or appointed by Waterford. Similar coverage should also be available to the town of East Line for the East Line members. Where's the part about the employees? Let's see, please, anybody?
So that's the, one of the last sentences.
Okay.
Wells, Wellsco would pay for wardens. But it just says.
But it doesn't say you can't.
It just, it just, it infers that the town, the towns will not pay to ensure general liability for your warden. Doesn't say anything about workman's comp.
Right.
Yeah, so this is, this is something that we could look into. I, I do wonder if that will be something that we will have to find out over the next year. And do we have to just get a one-year policy to resolve this? Or, you know, Fred, it's, it sounds like we have to pay tomorrow or we have to agree to the policy tomorrow and then pay in the next 30 days. And, and I, I don't think this is going to be resolved in the next 30 days. Do you, Fred?
No, I don't. What?
And, and we don't, we don't have to pay the workman's comp tomorrow because we don't even have the price or the coverage yet. The agent is still working on it.
Yeah.
I have, I have two points. We could, you can always cancel a policy. We can pay and you can always cancel and they'll reimburse you whatever is, is left. So to be covered, we should, in my opinion, we should do everything we can tonight, get our coverage and then work on what we need to work on. But I, I think that, how long ago did the town of East Line do our workman's compensation? If, we should go back to both towns and find out about that. And, and then we can, if we could do it through them, I think it would be quite a lot easier. Because the way I read that statement, it, it doesn't, it doesn't imply that we can't. It just says we're not doing.
That's how I read it also. And I would say that if you can get the, the warden and assistant warden covered under the workers' compensation for the towns of East Line and, or Waterford, it'll save us about $2,400. Because it's going to cost us about three grand for workers' comp for on land and, I'm sorry, $1,500 for work comp on land and $1,500 for on the water. So between the two, and the coverages according to the agents would have been in the $200 to $300 area. But if I can continue, just to address Pete's question that he had, can we, can we, and Marcia's? Can we take care of this within 30 days? I think we can take care of it in much less than 30 days. But I would say this though. You should get the insurance. If we don't want it, we can cancel it with, within a week or, or once we remedy our issues. And to Larry's point, we had, Pat and I had extensive conversations with the agent in Maine and the agent in Connecticut regarding the two pieces of workers' compensation as well as the rest of the coverage. None of them, I'm sorry?
The only, the only other question that comes to mind is their, their activities on the water. Are those, will those be covered by workman's comp or are those precluded by the Jones Act?
Those are covered under the Jones Act. And under the Jones Act is the crew coverage. And if you go to the policy itself, which I think, Pat, did you send everybody that policy?
No, I didn't.
Okay, and it specifically says, and it specifically says that these two, two wardens are covered. Doesn't name them, doesn't give any identifier other than the fact that they're, they're wardens for Wellsco since we are the insured and we're buying this coverage. And it only applies, the stuff from Maine now, only applies when they are on the water. The difference between longshoremen, the longshore coverage in Jones Act is Jones Act fits us better than longshore. And she went through it, longshore's, the heavier duty stuff, cargo, things of this nature, building docks and things like this, whereas this crew coverage is, and I think I give a, an example. Don't have it right in front of me, but it's, it's along the lines of what we do or our wardens do. Anyways, we had, in an attempt to put your mind somewhat at ease, Larry, the number of questions and the amount of information we went over with the two agents was extensive from the standpoint of what these people do and providing coverage for what they do. And that's how we ended up with these two pieces, the coverage for the water and the coverage for land. And both were quite clear that neither would cross the other. You couldn't use the two insurances for land and water, you know, intermittently. Or.
And Fred, and Fred. Fred.
Let you know something about this coverage. Historically, we've always paid the total premium on all the insurances for the whole year. But I did get from her, I think it was Saturday, that under the Smith Wick coverage, we can pay it over a year. Well, I shouldn't say a year, but anyway, the first installment is only like $380 tomorrow. Then on May 4th, I believe it is, then there's a payment of about $900. So if you give me the authority to go ahead and pay the $380 borrow to bind that coverage and then we can, we can see if we can work with the towns or whatever on land, work, Connecticut, workman's compensation. The, the, the other thing is, you know, basically, the other coverage is okay. It was, what was it, $1,077? And we took out the contents at the office, which is going to reduce it by 24. So there's no questions about that coverage. Why don't we go ahead and approve? Why don't we go ahead and approve paying that in full?
Rick, what are your thoughts?
Uh, well, I'd like to thank Pat and Fred for doing all the legwork. I think we definitely should do something tonight so we have coverage. And then, as some have suggested, you know, keep looking into these other details, see if we're doing it right or not, or if the town will cover a workman's comp on land, which it seems to be ample precedent that they used to, even if we have to pay the towns $200 or $300 bucks with the wardens on there. My other question for Fred, and this is just to reiterate, just, just to be clear, that the crew coverage is in lieu of workman's comp on the water, but the coverage is going to be similar in that it will pay lost wages or, or medical expenses for the wardens. Is that correct, Fred?
That is correct. It'll pay wages, medical, permanency, temporary disability, death. In case there's, in case of death, and there's survivors, those survivors, children or, or wife, it functions very much, as far as coverage is concerned, as land workers' compensation. And what, what I would really like to do is this, I, I'm a group, I think we should write these tonight so we have the coverage. We can cancel them, Pat brings up a good point. We can pay the monthly payment on one and find out from Lori down in, in Connecticut here, whether we can pay a month or two months on that one, if they have installment. Because both of them, I thought, referenced installments. I just don't know the numbers, what the numbers are. And just pay that first installment. But here's what I would request of everybody. Send me and Pat any questions that you have, that you would like us to pursue with the agent, and any rationale, so we get a benefit of your thinking, is to, like, your question is this, and you're posing it because you have this concern. That would be very helpful. Because sitting with them, we, the two of us aren't going to think of everything that, you know, all of us will think of. So if we could have that, this, what is today? Wednesday? Wednesday? One, Tuesday? By the end of the week, Pat and I can start on it, and we won't be behind the eight ball when it comes time to make a decision as to whether we want to keep it, keep any of it, or cancel any of it. But I'm comfortable with the conversations we have with the agents and their ability to answer what questions we did have, that they were knowledgeable in the areas in which they were writing their insurance. So I would say error on the side of caution, and that is, buy the policies now. Cancel them if we want to in, in a month.
I have a quick question. Do you, does any one of these companies have the ability to do all of our insurance?
Yes. The, I'm sorry.
And, and if so, would it save us money to be under one policy?
I don't know that it would save us money per se, but it would be much easier for us when we're providing information to the agent. In talking with Maura, who is our agent here in Connecticut, and Lori, our agent up in Maine, both of them said, why aren't you doing this in one location? And I think I spoke to that much earlier in the conversation. And that is, because Brian Sullivan was writing the insurance, and if you all remember, Brian ended up in Maine or something like this, but that was his specialty. Marine was Brian's specialty, more or less. And I think it just ended up that way by default. That's speculation on my part. I have no hard personal knowledge of that.
Yeah, but I don't think one of the, can't do all of it.
Pat, just one more question then. So how did we, how did we end up with the Smith Wicks? How come we not doing it all with Brown and Brown? Do they not do this crew coverage down here?
That's what I was just starting to explain. I think three Brown Brown, all the marine stuff goes to Southwick. I don't think, for instance, Southwick on their cover letter actually says they don't do workman's compensation.
Who said that?
Pardon?
Who, who said that in the letter?
Southwick.
Southwick said they don't do workers' comp. But when talking with Maura here in Connecticut, they do marine, non-marine, and all the other coverages we have. Now, if I'm incorrect in that, then I'll come back to you, but I could swear, both of them said to me, how come you don't have this in one place? And I said, because this is the way it's been, we're working on it, but right now we need to just get our coverages in line here.
Well, what I would say to her is, we're through Brown and Brown, you're Brown and Brown. Why, why do we have Southwick then?
Well, so that's a good, that's a good question for some, some point in the future. We can find that out, but.
The other thing is, if someone has to contact the two towns about workman's comp, I think it should be the chairman, because historically, both first electmen's want the chair to be the person that contacts them.
Yeah, and I'd be more than willing to start that conversation, although I think several of you have more financial slash insurance experience than I do. So I, I could introduce the subject with them and delegate to you guys. I think that would be much more productive, you see, in time.
Well, Pete, when I, when I come back in the middle of March, I could do it with you if you want, unless, unless it needs to be done sooner than somebody else can do it.
I don't, I don't think we should put ourselves under the gun. I think the consensus seems to be that we should agree to get the coverage that presently exists, pay for a period of time, and then resolve any of these subsidiary issues. But I don't think we should do it in a month. I don't think we should give ourselves, you know, a real short time limit.
Yeah, if it takes six months to work out and we end up getting, being able to do the workman's comp through the town, it's still going to be a win. If we decide to consolidate to a single insurance agent, I think that would be a benefit as well. I, I would, I'd be hesitant about rushing it. And, you know, if it takes six months to figure out, then I, then that's what it takes.
And getting, getting back to the point about additional named insured with Waterford, Shellfish and Eastline, Shellfish. You know, if, if they're not on there-
They are.
If, if they're not on there, the insurers will take that as an out to, to not provide coverage. If we're out in the bay doing a sample for Eastline or Waterford, and something happens to the boat, and if they're not on the coverage, then the insurers will, you know, they won't pay the claim. So I think they do need to be on there as additional named insured.
Waterford and Eastline, Pat, you need to speak to this because it was on the policies that you had. Waterford and Eastline are named as additional insurance under WellsCo's policy.
And when we, the town attorney in Waterford came up with the original agreement many years ago about we, we get reimbursed by the two commissions, they also, the town attorney at that time said that they should be named and co-insured because if something happened, and someone was, litigation came up, they might name one of the other commissions in addition to WellsCo.
So I think, I think I just said that, and they're on there anyway, so they need to stay on there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a question about method of payment. I would hope that we are going to go through our financial person and pay through that, not on a personal credit card.
Right.
I'm going to do it with our checking account. And the only reason I did it last year is because we were over a month, the link went, and I had to pay it immediately, or we were going to lose coverage. So I used my personal credit card.
Pat, don't we, don't we talk to our accountant and say they pay this bill?
I'm sorry, you're, it's like an echo.
Yeah, I heard that. Sorry about that. Can't we just call our, our accountant and say, send this amount to this company?
No, they, they would require documents to, and everything.
How could, how could our-
I've done it with other repetitive bills, like Eversource. I've set up where they take the money out of our checking account automatically.
Okay.
Well, we need to set it up for the insurance payment also.
And that's what I'm saying. That's what I want to do.
Yeah, okay. Oh, Peter, it wasn't possible. I'm sorry.
All right, so I, I think we're at a point where we can make a motion and a decision, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so, anyone wants to make that motion?
I guess I will, since I'm the one who's going to have to do it. I would make a motion that we pay the Smith Wick and the Liberty Mutual coverages, but only pay the minimum amount to secure the coverage.
All right, do I hear a second?
Now, now, that's going to require you to make another monthly payment, just so you know that if you're talking about a six-month period here, so just, that's all. I'm not trying to confuse-
I, I think it makes sense to pay for a longer period. If, if at some point we cancel the coverage, we'd get a pro reta refund, would we not?
Yes.
So I think it would be better to do six months or something and proceed, and then we don't have to live with this and be under the gun every month.
I think on both of the insurances, I'm sure on Southwick, there's no, there's no carrying charge for breaking up the payment.
So whether you, so whether you pay the whole bill at the beginning of the year, or you pay in installments, there's no extra fee to pay in installments? Is that what you're saying, Fred?
Correct. Unlike my personal insurance.
Yeah, because personally, personally, you usually get a discount for paying all at the beginning.
Yeah.
So perhaps we should authorize the payment of installments for more than one month.
Well, it is for one month, because the Southwick, the payment, the minimum payment of $380 is due tomorrow. The next payment's not due until May 4th.
Okay. How about the Liberty Mutual?
The Liberty, I don't know, but I'm sure I can contact them tomorrow and work that out.
And the Brown and Brown is just compensation, so we don't have to worry about Brown and Brown?
Brown and Brown is the agent over both insurance companies.
Okay.
Yeah, you, just for, if you, if you, the document that Pete sent to everybody, I tried to separate the policies. If you just look at that, you'll get a good sense for what's, what applies to Connecticut, what applies to Maine agent. But I, yeah, we should, we should approve it and pick a timeframe. Be it month by month, or five months, six months, whatever. But Larry's right, we, we can just cancel and get a return premium. So if we decide before this, whatever we pick for a timeframe.
So Pat, you made the motion that says, you know, approve the coverages, but only make the minimum payment. But if you amend your motion to, to, from minimum to up to a year, that would give us flexibility, either just to pay the minimum or pay the whole year. So if you, if you don't mind amending your motion just to say up to a year, I think that'll give us the flexibility that we need.
I just need to know, what am I going to do tomorrow?
You're, again, I would, like what Rick was saying, amend your motion to, to pay the, the full amount.
No, I'm not saying that. And to answer your question, Pat, you said there's no extra charge for doing an installment, so you can pay the, pay the first premium tomorrow, the $380, whatever. But this will give you, if we have ongoing discussions, we won't have to have a special meeting in May, you can pay the other one too.
Okay, I'll modify, I'll modify my motion that on all the insurances, we will pay the, the full amount in installments.
Okay, I'll second, I'll second it.
So the, the motion on the floor is for Pat to pay the insurance policies from Smith Wick and Liberty Mutual in installments for up to a year for the coverages we need, seconded by Rick. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Stained? All right, that passes eight to zero.
Now, Peter, do we need another motion to have you and a subcommittee look into workman's compensation through the town?
I don't know if you need a motion just to do an investigation, we're not-
A subcommittee, do we have to-
We're not really doing any, not really making any decisions.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna, for this special meeting, I don't, you can't add agenda items, so we couldn't create a subcommittee. I agree with Rick that if I just send an email to the town saying we'd like to meet with you guys to discuss this, I think that is something that we could talk about at our next meeting without any egregious FOI issue, any issue, so.
Really just informational.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I make, I've got a couple of final comments. One, Fred had asked, or somebody asked about agreed value versus cash value.
Replacement cost.
Right, it should be, it should be agreed value, though. If you agree it's worth $19,500, the boat sinks, they'll give you $19.5. But if it's cash value, whatever the other one is, they'll depreciate it, and if it sinks, they'll give you two grand, and then you won't be able to buy a new boat.
Yeah, and given the age of the boat.
It needs to be agreed value.
Yeah, given the age of the boat and the way they'll depreciate the motor, we'd probably end up with a pittance.
No, I looked up on Boat Trader, and I, I sent copies to Fred. I found three boats, two of them were 16-foot, ours are 19-foot. But I did find a 19-footer that was a 2004 boat. And they were asking, if I remember, Fred, it was like $24,000 for the boat.
Most of their app, and what the insurance company will give you bear a scant relationship.
Yeah.
Right, so it needs to be agreed value, and, and most of the value is in the motor, not in the boat.
To answer your question, it is agreed, it is an agreed value policy. Okay. And they, but they give a lump sum, $19.5. They don't break it up engine versus hull.
And, and that includes the trailer also.
Well, hopefully the trailer would never sink, so I think we're good with that. If the trailer sinks, there's going to be a lot of questions asked.
When, when Sandy came up and the water was in the warden's office, I would said the trailer would have floated.
Well, the next, the next Sandy thing will, will drive the boat up to higher ground.
It was, it was over at Captain John's that day, and we've been kicked out of there too.
Yeah, so.
Can I ask a question before we do part or go on to another subject? Earlier in our discussion- Earlier in our discussion, uh, you guys posed some questions, which I could not answer. And I suggested that you put it in writing and so forth. Do we still want that to go? Or do we, or you? I was not going to do anything from this point forward unless, um, you wanted me to do something, but I need that input before I do anything. So.
Well, my only request, Fred, if, if, if you have any further contact with the insurance agent, just confirm that the Jones Act coverage is automatic. Make sure there's nothing we have to do as a preliminary matter or as a predicate for that coverage for, for the wardens.
Got it.
And I think any, any commissioner can, um, forward you questions as long as you don't take any action on it.
Yeah.
We have, um, we have told, um, the town of Waterford that the docks are falling apart, sent them pictures.
Yeah, Pat, we can't, we can't talk about that, Pat. Pat, we, we really shouldn't talk about that. It's, it's not, it's, it's not on this agenda.
I was, I'm, it's not a motion or anything. I was gonna suggest if we meet with the towns, we might bring that up.
Pat, it, it really, let's, we can discuss that at the next meeting. I wanna make sure that this special meeting stays strictly with the agenda item at hand. Uh, I think we have covered it. And so, um, you know, again, I think we are all set with this meeting. Unless anyone has any final comments related to this insurance. On the agenda is public comment. Um, I don't think anyone is, it's just the eight of us here. So there's no one else on the line.
Well, I only, uh, I would like to see us look into having one company cover all of it and see if we can save some money. Is that, would that be apropos to?
Um, I think, I think we can move forward with that during the, during the coming months that we are going to try and resolve the, all this stuff.
And it, Fred and Pat are gonna take care of that? Or you want me to send a question to Pat? How do you want that form, how do you want that?
Send it to, uh, send it to Fred and me and we'll, we'll get together tomorrow and talk about it.
Yeah. All right. Uh, thank you, everyone. Uh, I think we're all set here, correct?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, that was Fred.
You have to send an email. I've got, I took the note last, last day did with Larry, so.
You don't wanna stay on till 10 o'clock today?
You know, okay, who was the first adjournment? Who made the motion to adjourn?
Paul.
I did.
Okay. And do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Tom, okay. All in favor to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, stained, eight to zero. Thank you very much, everyone. Uh, meeting ends at eight twenty-five.